Good evening. Welcome to the regular Planning Commission meeting in Grand Blank Township. I believe this is December 6, 2018. Please rise and join us in a part of the evening. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Planning Commission members present this evening, we have Mr. Mansour, Ms. Cole Brown, Mr. Gellings, Mr. Banderski, Mr. Horsia, just a few this evening. I know that Mr. Johnson is not able to make it. Mr. Gassan Saab is not available as well, Mr. Yacho looks like so. We've got six, means we've got a quorum at least, so we can take action on anything before us this evening. Next item on our agenda is approval of this evening's agenda. Anyone have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can we rotate to the items and put the new business first, followed by the old business to allow our applicants time to not have to spend time here.
So we will swap item seven and eight, no, six and seven.
And sir, if you'll all take a look, you have a copy of the draft, 2018 Annual Report. This will be the first one that we did. I just followed the basic format of one that you used last year, added a few things. But if the Commission, it just identifies things, we can adopt this in January if you like. There's not an awful lot, I'm happy to go over this quickly with you, but if the Commission desires, and it's important to you to adopt that in 2018, which it's not a requirement, we could take a couple extra minutes this evening and have you take a look at that. Otherwise, we could make sure that we have that on your January agenda without any problem.
Well, you're suggesting we insert maybe an item 7A?
Yes.
Of Planning Commission Annual Report.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other changes to the agenda this evening? Motion in order to approve the agenda as amended?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Banderski to approve the agenda as amended, support by Mr. Mansour. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 6-0. Next item is approval of the minutes of a regular meeting from November 1, 2018. Mr. Secretary?
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the minutes from the November 1 meeting and found everything to be in order, so I make a motion that we approve the November 1, 2018 meeting minutes.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Brown. Any other comments? Vote is in order, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 6-0. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for public comment, and this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission about anything that we are not having a public hearing on. We will be having a public hearing regarding both the site plan and special land use for the property at the corner of Ransome. So if you'd like to address the Planning Commission, if you're here to address the Planning Commission, anything other than that, now is the time. It doesn't look like we do, we'll close up public comment, bring it back up to the Planning Commission. Next item would be correspondence. We have planning and zoning news, it was in our packet, we had a couple of those. Anything else? Oh, yes, I do have one item that we'll review when we get to the site plan review and our special land use. There was a letter that was submitted in support of the business. With no other correspondence, then we will now move on to new business. Both special land use 18-004 and site plan review 1044. So come up, give us your name, address, and give us an overview, planning to do, and we'll go from there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have you a batch sheet that will address what I'll be talking about.
Thank you. Microphone.
Is that Mr. Lloyd, is it? Mic on.
Anyways.
Is it? Okay.
Thank you.
Just so it gets recorded, that's all.
Sing a little song while I'm off here. Thank you for having me. My name is Kelly Friedland. I am the potential business owner of a business by the name of, I am the owner of a business by the name of Joe Love Fit, which is a business that is going to be in honor of my son who passed away in May of 2017. This is going to be a fitness facility, a recreational and fitness facility. Hold on for a minute. And it's called Joe Love Fit because it's in honor of him, and the Fit stands for Fun, Innovative, and Therapeutic. A little bit of background about myself, as a business owner, I am currently a special education consultant at Oakland Schools. I work specifically with students who have significant special needs. I am the parent of a son with special needs. I used to be the Executive Director of Special Education in Birmingham, so I am very much aware of and familiar of the special needs population. That's important because as we go through this, I'll be talking a little bit about opportunities that will be available to students who have or individuals who have disabilities at the site. I am a certified personal trainer, I am a certified group exercise instructor, and have been for probably 30 years, long time. I am a prior bodybuilder competitive, and I am a prior director of special, or I mean, group exercise program at the Davison Athletic Club, which I did that job for about 10 years. I'm hopeful, if I get the special land use tonight and the approval for the site plan, that I will be projected to open in March, or February 2 of 2019, with a grand opening celebration scheduled for March 2 of 2019. That date was selected because I want to give the opportunity for the business to open the doors in February of 2019 and allow me to work out any bugs and anything that I might need to address prior to the grand opening celebration in March. I've looked at events going on in Grand Blank Township and surrounding areas, and I have not noted anything of significance that is currently available publicly that would be in conflict with this grand opening. What will be offered at the facility will be the traditional gym environment, in addition to some specialized classes for group exercise, personal training, wellness workshops, those would be a specialized, both wellness workshops and customized courses are specialized events that would not be part of a membership, but would be something that individuals could access whether or not they were members of the facility. Wellness workshops would include things on motivation, stress reduction, and mindfulness, among others, and customized courses would involve smoking cessation, nutritional counseling, and that kind of thing. So the intent of the business is not just for fitness, which, you know, physical fitness, it's also for emotional well-being and health. So I'm looking at hours of operation being Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturday 8:00 to 4:00, and Sunday 10:00 to 2:00. When we look at the site plan and we look at the building as well as the interior and exterior building as it stands, I will not be doing any structural changes internally or externally. The building will remain as it stands currently. The internal part of the building is exactly the way I need it to be. I mean, I got very lucky when I looked at this building, there's nothing that would need any type of renovation currently. I'm not going to be adding any showers, any other restrooms, I won't be adding anything in addition to what's already there and available. It's in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, handicapped accessible. There are 30 parking spots allotted, which is the required five per 1,000 square foot, with the two handicap spots available at the front of the building. You can see the, on the visual there, the exterior painting is consistent with the logo, which is also consistent with the branding that you have in front of you, so that's what it's going to look at like. The logo is not, or the signage is not to scale, but I do understand now that that's going to have to go through a whole nother process, so that's what we have currently. Security cameras will be installed, and I've already been working with the Public Works with regard to the sewer taps and anything additional that might need to be required from here on out. There's going to be a period of time where they're going to be looking at and metering to see how much water usage is going to be done, but I understand that they're willing to work with me on that. With regard to the garbage pickup, I'm not required to have a dumpster on-site, so there won't be any other exterior dumpsters or waste receptacles on the outside of the building. I've spoken with Mtera, the garbage collection organization, and they're telling me that I can do a commercial hand stop, and I can provide my own receptacles, which they will pick up on a weekly basis. The cost is $40 a month with a $2 fuel charge and whatever, so it'll cost me $42 a month. Recycling is also offered through Mtera, but I understand that I'm not required to do recycling at this point in time. I'm either going to add that for an additional $30 per month, or arrange to have recycling taken off-site if needed. Let's see, the loading zone that you can see on the site plan, there are two areas for a loading zone. The loading zone will be used very infrequently, there's currently a large door where you can access the building for such purposes. I will be bringing in a lot of fitness equipment in the first few weeks of opening, prior to opening actually, first few weeks of, once I get the building closed and that kind of thing. But what I've been told from the architect is those areas in front, directly in front of the loading area, may be used as parking. I'll only be using that in addition to the initial moving in of the machines irregularly in the event that a machine needs to be repaired, removed, replaced, anything of that sort. I will be responsible for maintaining the parking lot with regard to snow removal, restriping, pothole repairs, any other type of maintenance that's required at this point in time. I'm also willing to look at additional landscaping, maintaining the areas that there are lawn or grass on there, and we talked in our meeting prior about having some additional landscaping added in some identified sections of the parking lot. Primarily around the sign. I'm also planning, I had mentioned the special needs usage, I am going to be contacting school districts within Genesee County, as well as the Genesee Intermountain School District, to offer this as a work site for individuals with special needs. State of Michigan educates students from the ages of 0 to 26, so there are many students that are between the ages of 18 to 26 who need to have work sites that they can go to and do something that's meaningful and productive. In the event a work site were to be successful for them, and it's in an area of their interest, I would certainly even consider employing individuals for that purpose. So I'm hopeful that not only will this be a health and wellness facility for Grand Blank community, but also assist individuals with disabilities. I see this as having potential opportunities for employment in Grand Blank and positive PR for the community as well. The rate will be affordable, it's going to be $32 a month, the age of my son, and there will be individual family rates, group rates, that kind of thing, and like I said, some of the specialized courses will not be included in those membership rates, but I do have a plan already developed for additional costs as they incur. Promotion will be done via a website, there's already a website that has been created, will be advertising on social media, press releases, radio, television, there will be community events, as well as I will be offering charitable events throughout the course of the year. So I want to give back to the community and give back to agencies and organizations who can use that and benefit from that. That is pretty much what I have to say as far as the site plan and the request for a special land use permit. Are there any questions?
Excuse me, through the Chairman, Kelly, would you, for the record, would you please state your address?
Oh, sure, my address that I live at?
Yes.
7407 Pine Tree Court, Davison, Michigan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions from Planning Commission members for the applicant?
I have a question. You mentioned possible landscaping around the site, but just to be clear, I mean, the area there that's, you know, kind of the highlighted, that's the, what's now paved, right? But where's the actual property line? Is it, does it go up to the street?
What you see is the property line. Property line's here and here, it's that gray area, that is the property. This is right-of-way, here and here, on the north and on the west. That right-of-way was acquired by the county over the years, they simply came in after the project was developed and obtained additional right-of-way. That resulted in the loss on their property of the landscaping. Landscaping's still out there, but it's not on their property anymore. That's basically what's happened. So if they want to put a drive aisle or a deceleration in, or another lane in on Fenton Road, the county owns the right-of-way that they could do that now.
So all that green area really is in right-of-way?
Yeah, it used to be part of that property, is what we assumed, but over the years, the county's just acquired that right-of-way.
So when you suggested landscaping, where would you?
What we talked about in the site plan review meeting that we had prior to this is, there is a space here that's unusable as a parking space, the sign is here. I'm putting some low landscaping in that area that wouldn't block the sign.
And as you also look at the site plan, there is an area for two planners at the front of the building, and then there's an area at the back of the building that will be used for additional landscaping as well. Very small.
Any other questions?
So I have a couple of questions, please. So I don't see any shower or locker facilities, you said that we're not going to have any, okay?
No.
I think you explained the differentiation of the club, so I understand that. Is the intention to have someone man the, like an employee man the facility during the hours of operation?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I do have a general manager who's already been identified, and she will be there for the majority of the work hours, or the times that the facility will be open. There will be part-time employees who will staff it on each end of that.
I have a kind of a general question to Mr. Lloyd or Mr. Laddie. So this is currently zoned as general commercial?
That's correct.
Well, if that doesn't include this kind of use, I mean, what, if that doesn't include this kind of use, what?
It does through a special land use.
Okay.
Health and fitness is a use that's allowed in that district as a special land use.
So what wouldn't require a special land use?
That's a great question.
Retail store, no, that's a good question. A retail store.
General commercial, okay, retail store.
A retail store.
Would a restaurant require one?
It requires special land use, right?
Pardon?
It requires special land use as well.
It depends on the type of restaurant, but some of them do.
Okay, thank you, all set.
Let the record show that Mr. Yacho has joined us.
Sorry, I'm late.
Any other, Mr. Gellings, if I may?
Mr. Brown? This is for our colleagues who are not in the site plan review, but one of the things that we ask petitioners to do is to have their electric contractor provide a photometric plan for the facility, for the site.
After the public hearing, I thought there's some, a few things we'd go through in what we discussed at site plan review. Any other questions, comments from Planning Commission members? It was pointed out to me that I did not identify that our planner, Mr. Lloyd, is here, as well as our attorney, Mr. Laddie. So now's the opportunity that we will open up to the public to address the Planning Commission, and I guess maybe just before we do that, did receive a note regarding the special land use from Becky Bacon. It states, "To whom it may concern, it's exciting to hear that there is interest in the property located at 5509 Fenton Road. Getting another supportive business in the area would be great for the economy and community. The building is a great location for a business opportunity, as it would be easy to access for locals and hopes drawing more customers for those surrounding businesses. I personally work in the area and look forward to seeing what business takes off there next." We're going to open up to the public, you can have a seat if you would like. Anyone would like to address the Planning Commission, from up to the podium, give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Robin Trumper. I live at 916 Middle Road in Highland, Michigan, and I am the Executive Director of Freedom Work Opportunities. We are the sellers of the property, and I didn't know until tonight what the use is going to be for that or was projected, and that's really exciting to me, because there is not a whole lot available to our people with special needs, and that is what Freedom Work Opportunities does. We have a vocational training program and the resale store. We outgrew that building, we were greatly accepted into Grand Blank and had very successful business there, but we outgrew that building. We take in donations for our resale store, and we definitely needed more space, so I think it's been about a year and a half that it's been for sale. So this is very exciting to me that there would now be another opportunity for people with special needs, so that's it. Anything else? Any questions?
No.
No?
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the Planning Commission? If not, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back up to the Planning Commission. We will be going to Mr. Lloyd, you provided a report for us.
Yes, sir.
I guess I just maybe wanted to say at this time, we did a preliminary site plan review prior to this meeting. We had three comments, one is the signage is under separate permit, that will be submitted for compliance with township ordinance. We requested that a photometric site lighting plan be provided, so we can get an idea of where they're at in regard to lighting intensity, and we identified that that would be reviewed by the township staff, and then, as was noted earlier, we request they provide some additional landscaping at the front of the site near the existing. So those were the three conditions that we granted preliminary site plan review. Mr. Lloyd?
Sure. Well, and this evening, the appropriate course of action would be for the Commission to recognize the Site Plan Review Committee's recommendation to approve it subject to these conditions of approval that were just mentioned, and what I say by "it" in this case is the Site Plan Review Committee reviews the site plan, makes a recommendation on that. It takes the full Planning Commission to approve special land use, as well as a final site plan in conjunction with that. So this evening's action would be for the Commission to approve the final site plan and the special land use approval. Those would be the actions subject to the conditions of approval, and we'll have those listed in the disposition letter that we send out to the applicant.
As well as any other conditions that might need to be added by, or would like to be added by the rest of the Planning Commission.
Indeed.
Anything else in your report?
I don't think there was anything outstanding in the report that I feel like I really need to key off on. I think it was pretty straightforward, reuse of an existing building, was there something?
No, just kind of an existing non-conforming site, we're just looking for a little bit more conformity with ordinance and headway in that direction. May I answer?
So Chairman Gelling, in Mr. Lloyd's report, it says the Planning Commission can waive the requirement for a trash dumpster and enclosure if you feel adequate arrangements are made. So does that have to be done specifically, or by approving the site plan, we waive that?
Yeah, by approving the site plan without it on there.
Yes, sir. The discussion was that they will keep the trash inside the building until trash day, set it out, gets picked up, just like at your house.
Okay.
Like at my house.
Sounds like my house as well.
Any other questions, comments from Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Banderski?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Site Plan Review Number 1044, subject to the conditions that have been stated.
As a final site plan?
As a final site plan.
Support for that motion by Mr. Banderski?
Support.
Motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Horsia, any further discussion? The vote is in order, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Is that six in favor and one abstention? No?
No.
I'm sorry, my hearing isn't that good, I didn't. So we actually have, that passed 7-0 then, thank you. All right, I think we need to address the special land use, any additional discussion about any other conditions?
Just the ones that were noted, Mr. Chairman. If you'd like a motion, I'll be prepared to offer a motion up.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Special land use number 18-004, for the special land use, I would make a recommendation for approval of their request for the special land use.
Support. Support by Mr. Yacho, any additional discussion? The vote is in order, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 7-0. All set. Won't hold you here if you don't want to stay.
Good luck. Hope you do well.
You know, that's a good point.
Yeah. Right, right. I would expect that, you know, we'll need to have that in here by the time you occupy the building.
You know, that is a good point, should, we should probably put a date in the future that the landscaping needs to be.
True enough, because we did mention that, and I think it was just overlooked during the motion.
It was discussed earlier.
About six months, because we get through winter, is what we talked about. So with regard to that, that's when that'll be required, be in the spring, and then with regards to the photometric, we would need to see that and have it approved before you get occupancy, and it's a real simple plan to have prepared. If you're running into any complications with that, with your lighting guy or your electric guy, whatever, just let us know.
What about the signage portion of it? That's separate, correct?
That's separate, and that's up to them. We'll have a code enforcement letter to you asking you to remove that pretty soon, so you're going to want to get on that and get that repaired pretty quick, I'm sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
The next item on our agenda would be, well, get confused by the numbering. We decided, right? We want to move on to the master plan discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Laddie's ready for that. Am I right?
I am ready. Hello again.
Hello.
It's been a while. I haven't been here in a while, that's true. Usually when I'm here, something bad is happening.
So, excuse me.
That's what I said, is what's Mr. Laddie doing here?
Chairman Gelling, did we decide that we were going to put the review of the Planning Commission Annual Report after this, or after Mr. Laddie?
I had it as a 7A, so I thought we'd move the new business to six.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Okay.
I'm numbering.
All right, back on. Anyway, the reason I'm here is, I was discussing with Mr. Lloyd some, first of all, the processes you're about to embark on regarding and updating the master plan, and we started talking about some philosophical planning concepts and legal concepts, and I have always, and I think you know this, those of you that have worked with me in the past, I am have worked with me in the past, I am keenly interested in the master plan, particularly as it affects our zoning ordinance and particularly how that affects administration of that zoning ordinance, including requests for rezoning and the like. And Grand Lake Township has had a history of success in being able to defend their designated zoning districts and their existing zoning map. And I think that's the case in large part because of the level of detail and also the level of consistency of the master plans that we've had in the future and past. I'm excited for you all to begin to travel down that road again. And I'm excited to observe. And I think I'll be here really as an observation point just so that I have a thorough understanding of your processes and your ideas as they become codified in the plan, but also as they find a way to the zoning ordinance. And one of the most exciting things that's happened in my mind as a result of the planning process is the creation of the Tech Village zoning ordinance and the requirements that exist and the regulations that exist in that district. That was something, that was a long time in the making. And because of a lot of interesting circumstances, including property owners being willing and desiring to participate with us in the process, we were able to create a zoning district and create regulations that essentially will form the basis of development, whoever owns that property, whoever buys it. And that is something I haven't seen, not only in Grand Lake Township, but in other communities. I have to commend you on your foresight and the speed at which the planning commission and township board carried that out. And one of the things that I also wanted to convey, again, from a legal standpoint, is when I look through the ordinance again and I look at the requirements for somebody coming in and asking for a zoning amendment, there are a list of criteria that you can find in section 7, 10, section 5. And they're lettered A through N. And they are essentially the criteria that the planning commission and by adoption, the township board would need to find before they could approve an amendment to the zoning ordinance. The first one right off the bat is consistency with the goals and policies and future land use map of the Grand Lake Township master plan. I was in another community that didn't have this criteria in their zoning ordinance just a while back. And they got a request to rezone a piece of property from a sort of lighter density residential use to one of their heavier categories of residential uses. And they didn't have this criteria and they kind of struggled through it. And what I remembered about your ordinance and the way you analyzed proposed changes is the first thing that you go to, and I think that one of the criteria you give the most weight to, is how does it fit with the master plan? And that is a great rule of thumb. But, it's easy to say that, but it's also hard to put in the foresight and the effort and the evolution of your master plan. And so, I think, again, I think you're on the crest of a wave to do that all over again. And I'm excited to see what sort of changes you might want to implement into the future master plan going forward. And the other thing, just as a matter of history, is I remember, and I think Ms. Coulter was on the board, our planning commission, back in 2002, 2003, and I think Mr. Gellings was, and I think Mr. Johnson was, because we had that rezoning request for what is now Tech Village. And if I miss anybody back then, I'm sorry about that. But, we had the request to rezone, we had zoned R and D, which was a Tech Village property. And the applicant wanted to rezone a general commercial. And we ended up in a pretty significant lawsuit. And I can remember during that trial, Grand Lake Ventures actually putting on the blackboard for damages in that case, in excess of $40 million. And it was a bench trial in front of Judge Yule. Judge Yule found for the township in the denial of the rezoning. And the case went up to the Court of Appeals. But, I remember during the trial, and also the Court of Appeals paid some attention to this as well, one of the main factors was that it wasn't consistent with our master plan. And that was one of, in my opinion, that was one of the criteria that Yule primarily hung his hat on for the upholding of zoning ordinance. And then, it was to review at the Court of Appeals. And so, that is just a living example of how important the master plan process is and how it has practical effects. It doesn't just help guide from a philosophical standpoint. It reaches way into the future, but it also has real world, real time impacts. And that was a scary moment when they presented a pretty good case and they put $40 million up for damages. That was, your heart skipped a beat during that. But, again, it was upheld because of the careful work of the planning commission and township board. And even the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals said that Grand Lake Township Planning Commission had considered all sorts of possibilities for that property. And so, I hope we never go through that again. But, it's good to know that we've got that backstop. And it's good to know that you guys are going to engage in that process with that understanding of the, that it really is going to form the bedrock of the zoning ordinance going forward. Also, I've had the pleasure of being involved in a newly-formed Grand Lake Downtown Development Authority, which is an interesting group. They are sort of an autonomous group of nine people, eight really, because Supervisor Bennett is a member of that board. But, they are charged with trying to develop with tax increment financing dollars that would ordinarily go to the county and to the township. And for those dollars to be planned and spent within the downtown development district. And that includes the Tech Village area, but also sort of follows the freeway up into the Genesis area and down Pollock Road. And also encompasses a lot of the industrial properties that are on Holly Road, south of the freeway. And right now, Row Incorporated is developing a proposed development plan for the DDA to look at. And one of the main points of that plan would be to try to provide facilities for that entire area. And when I say facilities, I mean sewer and water, other infrastructure, could be internet, could be all kinds of things. They have the ability to build buildings. They have the ability to buy property. They have the ability to carry out all sorts of improvements there. But, it needs to be done in a way that's consistent with our current township zoning and future township zoning, but also the master plan. And so, I think you guys are going to play a pretty important role in at least touching base with the DDA about what's possible under the existing zoning and what's possible in the future land use map. And it also occurred to me that the Tech Village area of that district is pretty well master planned and pretty well thought out in the zoning district. But, there are other parts that aren't and that I don't know if we've spent much time thinking about it. And one of the DDA members said that there is a need probably for a regional solution to the commercial traffic in the I-75 Holly Road area because we're accumulating a lot of big and successful industrial properties there. And they say that on the ground, they're running into logistics problems getting their trucks in and out and coming up with sort of a consistent, good flow through there. And they said, maybe as a DDA, we should look at some sort of regional changes for commercial traffic. And I thought that might be something that you guys would give some consideration too. I mean, there's no reason that the DDA and the planning commission need to operate on separate, parallel tracks. We might as well have those tracks crossed with them. And so, that's exciting too. And so, I think that the DDA will get their proposed plan from Row. They're on a very short timeline because we've already had some development with Magna in the downtown development district. And we want to try to capture the tax increment financing increases. So, we need to go back to, I think, maybe December 31st, 2017. So, we may capture all of Magna's improvements and get them a good jump start with the money. But, the problem is we've got a really short timeline. And Mr. Brown, do you have a?
David, I do if I don't mind talking about what was going on with Magna. I'm in the understanding that the Door Highway extension is probably going to begin coming to fruition sometime April, May timeframe of this year.
I think you're right.
How much importance should the zoning, not the zoning ordinance, the planning commission think about that in incorporating that into the master plan?
The Door Highway exchange and/or the DDA's?
Yes. Both.
You know what's interesting about that? And I don't, you guys are responsible for the whole township, right? And so, I don't know. And there will be probably hot spots where you'll spend a little more time than others. I think that you might be able to, depending on what your timeframe is, and yours will be longer than the DDA's, but you might be able to have the DDA do the groundwork on that kind of thing. And I think there are members of the DDA that are interested in kind of bringing that idea to life quickly. And they also may be able to do it, you might be able to do it on their dime. Like, you won't have to spend additional money focusing on that part of your master plan. It might come out of that room for your review and consideration. So, I would kind of let that happen. I would let them take the lead as far as logistics are concerned and Door Highway. Not that you're not interested, not that you can't do what you want to do, but it just seems like you get a little bit of a free ride, at least in the beginning.
But, with regards to the master plan, we'll, of course, concentrate on that particular area. That's partially where you were heading. There will be full, you know, analysis of that area and the potential development opportunities and things of that nature associated with that in conjunction with the DDA and every other opportunity area that we have. Yes.
Yeah. And the other thing about the DDA is that once they, they need to get this plan out quickly, and it has to do with the tax increment financing deadline, but they can amend their plan also. So, it turns out that they, they're not, we're not headed in the same direction initially, then they can adjust their direction accordingly. And the other thing to remember is you guys have authority over them. I mean, they can't affect your master plan. They can't affect your zoning. They can ask you for changes. They don't have the power, they have the power to spend money, but they don't have the power to change things. And so, they'll need to come to you and persuade you if that happens to be the case. So, it's really, we've never had this kind of development. We've never had a DDA. And I think it's great timing that the master plan is up for review at the same time. And it's very exciting. And the other thing is, and I know you guys probably heard this with the Tech Village, but I still am thinking about, we talked about this a little bit at the DDA, that the plan, the Chesapeake group put together this financing plan and a feasibility plan when Tech Village could actually hit build out. And it's in a soundingly short time. It might even be, once it begins, it might be eight years or something like that.
Oh, it is.
And so, I think even though all this stuff seems kind of far off in the future, I think once it begins to go, I think it's going to take off like a rocket. And it'll be nice to have everything in place and try to control it as much as we can.
Questions for Mr. Laddie?
Exciting. I'm looking forward to it.
It is. It's going to be fun. And I promise, if I come to future meetings, I won't talk unless I'm asked a question.
Mr. Mansoor?
Chairman, Chairman Gelling, maybe it would be appropriate for us to sign or ask Director Lloyd to be kind of an intermediary between the planning commission and the DDA in terms of syncing up our master plan activities and kind of maybe even giving him an opportunity, putting him on task for what we need.
I think it might be good at some point to have some back and forth discussion or presentation of what they're planning to do.
Sure. Yeah, there will need to be that, if you don't mind. I mean, there needs to be consistency of the plan with our master plan. So, there is a process associated with that that the commission will be involved in at a minimum. But, if I might, I would say there will be involvement and communication and a working relationship with the DDA and the commission because there's a strong desire for that DDA to be successful. And most successful DDAs are ones that work closely with the other agencies within the community to ensure that, you know, everybody's walking in step. And that's an important thing to occur. You don't want there to be different approaches to things and different ideas on what might occur. So, there will need to be communication and coordination, and that'll happen.
And I'm at both meetings, so I'm happy to, I mean, I'll be here for your master plan and also the DDA. And the documents, again, they're going to, I expect any moment, there'll be a release from Row regarding the proposed development plan. And when that document's released, you guys should really have a copy of that. Anybody's really welcome to have a copy of it and make comments on it. Then, there's about a 90-day period of time where it will find its way around to the various people that need to look at it and approve it.
Thought it maybe as part of this master plan discussion, we could give a little bit of an update as to where we're at in the process. We did receive a number of proposals from different firms. Mr. Lloyd, myself, Mr. Mansoor met. We reviewed those, scored the proposals, and we've narrowed it down to three that we intend to interview. Process of doing some background checks and that kind of thing. And we'll set up some interviews and likely make a recommendation to the planning commission as to make sense to bring on. Proposals were, I thought, very good, well put together. And except for one, were very consistent in the pricing range and fell within our budget.
By me, Mr. Chairman? I look at this and think about that we are right now at this point in time at the crest of a wave that can make this township just explode. And people will want to come and work and live here in this township. And I think that's really exciting.
We've got a lot of great opportunities and a lot of responsibilities. You know, they go hand in hand with this effort. So, you're right, this is good timing and there's a number of things happening that, you know, the energy's pretty high. And it's a good time.
All right, so maybe now would be the time we move on to the planning commission annual report?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not looking to spring this on you, and I apologize if anybody is, you know, feeling put upon. It was not the intent. It just happened to be done. I just got it wrapped up and didn't have it done in time for the agenda, which I apologize for. But, Matt gave me the final sheet today, which was the, you know, the last page, the layout of the location of these projects that have happened over this year. And so, if you'll remember, you know, last year, the commission adopted a similar report. What I've done is updated everything. I've gone through, changed the commissioners roster, the dates for the expiration, identified a few things, added a note here and there with regard to some updates, went through the development processes. We had four applications that went through the commission. 14 went to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we approved eight administrative site plans. There's a map at the end of that that shows the planning commission and ZBA items. And we go into just a brief discussion about what site plans are, special land uses. And we go into just a brief discussion about what site plans are, special land uses. We do mention the fact that we have a Planning Commission member who's also a Zoning Board of Appeals member, and so there's a, a strong relationship there. I have a few things to add about that later. And then we've got a couple of things that are, that have happened this past year. One, very recent, but a while ago, we approved the updated sign ordinance, you may recall that. And then more recently, the board approved a, an ordinance to opt out of the recreational marijuana legislation. So we've, we've taken that position. Even though that wasn't a commission action, it's still, you know, a land use related item, so I thought that would be important, and I don't know how much of that might have gotten reported out to you, because it sort of just happened because we needed to get it done quickly. And Mr. Laddie took care of that. And then, you know, the, the document does mention a little bit about the year ahead. We've talked tonight about the master plan, and we do have three proposals that we're looking to interview, and we're looking to interview them by the end of this year. And then we hope to bring the recommended consultant to the commission the first meeting of the year, and then the very first meeting of the board, we would hope to be able to take a contract to them and ask them to approve it if all of this goes well. So we may very well be on task that very first month of, of twenty nineteen. With regards to zoning amendments, there are some things coming up. The Planning Commission did, in fact, amend the sign ordinance to address temporary signs. That wasn't too long ago, we did that. But recently, this is an interesting situation that we're, we're working on right now. The Zoning Board of Appeals had a request that came in at their last meeting, and, and that was for a rather substantial sign, a wall sign on the Ascension, Genesis Hospital Building. And it was quite a bit larger than the ordinance allows. We allow a hundred square feet, and it was a request for a thousand. And what we started to look at was the recognition that our ordinance addresses signage as it's viewable from, you know, the typical public streets, you know, and including, you know, streets like Saginaw and Dorton and others. But that's generally how sign ordinances are designed. And what we're finding is that a number of these larger corporate developments that we've obtained over the last couple of years are looking to accentuate their presence and have greater signage visible from the freeways, frankly. And so as we've looked at that, I don't know, a year, year and a half ago or so, I think the, the township took action to approve a relatively large, about four times the normal size or allowable size, sign at the McLaren facility. You can see that off the seventy-five, it's right there. So if you see that relatively large, not too big for the mass of the building, it's, it's to scale with the building, but it's a bigger sign than would normally be allowed. It's about four times larger than the, than the ordinance allows. So we've already got a precedent where we've allowed it, and it's about two, three hundred feet back. Well, you look at the distance of the Ascension or Genesis building, yeah, it's about a quarter of a mile back, even a little further than a quarter of a mile. So, you know, we've got to start to develop some scale. So we're taking a look at the ordinance and, and trying to come up with what might be an overlay district to consider for the freeway, to allow for signage in those overlay areas. That hasn't occurred, we're just barely getting started. The ZBA asked us to take a look at that, Mr. Brown's a member of that ZBA, as the Planning and, and Building Director. Of course, that would be one of the areas I would look at. But the thing that is starting to transpire there, and I'll, I'll slow down here in a minute, is the relationship between the, the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission, at least from my perspective, is, is heading in the right direction. That's exactly the kind of thing, feedback that we should be getting from the Zoning Board of Appeals, is, hey, by the way, this was a little excessive, or it's not a bad idea, you know, with the Planning Commission mind taking a look at that, and having Mr. Brown on there, and of course, myself now, helps to bring that relationship together. So the commission will probably be taking a look at that in the next couple, three months, so that'll come our way. And I think Mr. Brown has agreed to help me move on with that. The other thing that I would point out is with regards to that work program, and, and I would just kind of back up a little bit there and, and mention, you know, some of the work that's been done in regards to that work program so far, where Commissioner Coulter has, has helped tremendously in helping to draft some language for a new solar ordinance. So we got together and took that on from our, a couple of months ago, the discussion at the Planning Commission meeting was to move forward with one of those items, and we took the solar energy one and are moving with that. The next one will probably be the overlay of the signage, and there's a couple of other things. So, so that's starting to evolve as well. And, and so what I'm trying to do is just incorporate that information into the annual report, which is your report, that'll just end up being forwarded to the board. And the only reason I'm kind of springing it on you is it's, if the commission is comfortable with this tonight, there's not an awful lot of, of, there's nothing controversial, of course, isn't it? But if the commission is comfortable, then we'd be able to adopt it tonight and forward to the board by the end of the year. If you wanted to wait till after your first meeting in January, that's okay, too. Just an opportunity, and thought I'd, I'd do what I could.
If we could, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lloyd's comments were good. I'm thinking about the fact that, you know, we had an election back in November and even before then, and we've got some commissioners on the Board of Trustees that maybe have never been aware of this or exposed to what we do from a yearly standpoint in providing this document. What are your thoughts on how you see this being a good communication for the Board of Trustees and you specifically?
So, thanks. Yeah, this is always a connection point with the board, so I think this is a, a critical document. I was pleased with the one we had last year, and I, I think it's a good communication. I think what it was designed to do is to do two things, is to kind of wrap up accomplishments of the, of the board, and I think it, I think it does, does that. I think last year, we may have been, of course, they're, they're listed here on the map pretty well, but we may have done more to enumerate, you know, some of the approvals that were done here, special land uses. I think we actually had a planned unit development, if I'm not mistaken, that we did the, the hotel thing, as I recall. So anyway, I think that's a good communication, but the other part of it is the looking ahead part. And so I think that that's pretty well recognized here. I was going to comment under page two at the bottom, other highlights and meetings. Those meetings that are there, are those two thousand nineteen, they must be two thousand eighteen meetings, right?
Yes.
So, to probably want to, want to label that.
Oh.
But anyway, yeah, I think this is a good document. One of the things that I just was, notice as I was reading it, is the numerous references to the two thousand nineteen work program. I think it's left a little bit open here, because we really haven't had a chance to take a look at it. You've provided some input, maybe half a dozen or more different items. And I don't know if the commission is okay kind of leaving that open for, for later, or if we wanted to be maybe a little bit more specific for the Township Board on the items that we really want to put focus on.
Might not be a bad, in my opinion, might not be a bad idea to kind of give a little overview of what we're looking to do.
On the work program? If the commission would be comfortable, what I would or could do is to attach a draft of that twenty nineteen work program. You've all looked at it, I think, at the last meeting, but.
I guess what I would suggest, I mean, I don't expect a lot of changes, but I would like to have Planning Commission members get an opportunity to read through it.
Oh, absolutely. You bet.
Suggest we take action in the next month.
Sure.
Next month, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe as a suggestion that we could just recirculate that draft proposals for the work program ahead of time, that way we could be kind of prepared for some consensus around that.
And if you get any comments from Planning Commission commissioners early, if you want to incorporate that, put it out as part of something for us to take action on.
I'll put it on the next agenda.
Perfect.
Both.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Banderstey.
An observation, just by looking at the map, red versus blue, and I know that's not Republican or Democratic, but it looks like the ZBA has really been working hard on the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
It's slanting off. And so it, it doesn't really reflect the amount of work that's gone on, and that's my concern when I just look at this kind of a summary.
Okay.
Because we, you know, some of these, we talk two or three times, you know, bottom, and then, and finally approve it and so forth, but just a quick view, you look at that and say, hmm.
Yeah.
Those guys aren't working very hard, the blue guys.
What could make their bubbles bigger?
Yeah. You know, and I don't know how you can take some of the stuff that we do.
I'll, I'll look at that. The problem is with what you're talking about is that this is a geographic, you know, representation of where these things happen. These philosophical conversations sort of happen generally, you know, and so it's hard to put that on, on paper.
Well, for example, site plans, you know, we had, I don't know how many, this past year, but, and of course, those then funnel up into the Planning Commission, but that's a separate group, separate group of people that do a lot of work and prep for the Planning Commission. So is there a way to capture some of that on here?
Well, they're in here, the site plan review.
What?
But it's not going to be reflected on that. Well, you know what? I, I like what you're saying. The other thing that we can do, I will look at that and, and I'll take, but you know, the one thing that you just made me realize is that the administrative approvals aren't listed on here either, if that matters to you. So we could, we could include those as maybe yellow diamonds or yellow stars or something, but we'll look at that, sure. The feedback is helpful, and if you've got other ideas and suggestions, by all means, shoot them our way. And what I'll do is, probably beginning of next week, I'll push this back out and ask for, you know, comments, and I'll probably give you a week. I don't want to wait till the next meeting, probably just ask you guys to give us some comments back. Or call and tell us what your thoughts are, you don't need to.
But you might try maybe a bar graph of some kind, because just reading numbers, you know, that doesn't quite register as fast. You know, you had four site plans reviewed, and these site plans included this, you know, maybe just that number of meetings to reflect time spent.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look at that. You know, and if you'd like to pop in and chat with me about it, I'd be happy to give some thought to your ideas, sure.
I think we like this map as well, because I think we first saw this, really liked that idea.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Matter of fact, what I like to do.
The visual part helps to.
Yeah. What, what I've done before, and what I like to do here also, is have these available online, so that while current projects are happening, folks can take a look at current projects and click on it and see the plans.
But, excuse me if I may, that, it's always fun, because I look at this and I'm going, I'd forgotten about that when I was a kid.
Right.
And, oh yeah, this, oh, so, so I, I like it, it's a reminder of what we've been doing.
Good, I, I, sure. I wonder if you couldn't include the names of the businesses that we've approved, the, that the sign variances have been approved for, so that we can, so that people can connect those rather than just the address?
Yep.
Because we talked about this, how, you know, the, the wall size, building size compared to the hundred square foot allowance.
Right.
Okay.
Good feedback. We ready to move on to committee reports?
Excuse me, I, Mr. Chairman, I have one other question.
Sure.
From Mr. Lloyd. Did you ever determine what's going on at the old Wicks Lumber site on Ball, Ballon Road?
No. You live across the street?
Well, if I may, well, I traveled that. The Zito's purchased that property, and they are developing it, I believe, to be an equipment repair and storage facility. There's a lot of indoor space there where they can house their equipment. Currently, they, you have a repair facility across the street from our farm, but that facility is not on a Class A road, so they have some difficulty getting equipment out of there during the frost loss season, where the lumber company, that, that is a Class A road from the, from the De Kramer site all the way to Holly Road.
But it went from lumber to church to maybe the current site, and I, because I drive by there quite a bit, and I saw all the movement of earth and so forth. And so I was just wondering what was what, and every time we've talked about it in the Planning Commission, nobody knew what was going on, or there were no, to my knowledge anyway, any talk about permits pulled for whatever. And it just keeps changing. So thank you, Mr. Yanchow, I just have a sense for now for what's going on.
I have a note here, and we'll, we'll have code enforcement start to take a look at that and find out exactly what's going on. Something that might need a special land use or other permit, and we're going to need to help them get that.
I believe that what they're doing, and it would follow with what they did when they purchased the site at Baldwin and I-75, was screen themselves from passersby. If you drive I-75, you notice the big rock boulder walls that they've constructed that screen that site from I-75, and it would appear that that's what their intention is with the earth that they've moved there, that they're going to probably plant some, some type of landscaping on that, as, as they did at their site. If you look at their site at the corner of Grand Blanca and Fenton Road, they have extensive evergreen screening of, of all their equipment.
Thank you.
You look puzzled.
Which is interesting, how much work goes on without maybe any problems.
It happens.
All right, are we ready for committee reports now? Mr. Mansour, Township Board?
So I don't have a particular report out from the board, and we're just continuing to do our, our normal work there. I think, you know, nothing, nothing special related to the Planning Commission. However, again, we are budgeting for the master plan funds, so that's, that's in there. A question that I did have, though, is that there have been a couple of items, and sometimes I can get confused between this and the Township Board, related to gas stations. They had the thing come through with Sam's, having a potential gas station there, and then there was something buried deep in one of the reports about a potential gas station kind of near the Rite Aid on McCandlish and Holly. Is anything going on with those? Do we have any?
It just kind of slowed down. They, the, the developer, if you will, well, Kroger is who it was, came in to talk about that. We went through that conversation, and there, it's just in their mill, it's just what, the time it takes for them to churn it out. They, they, they came in, we, we talked to them about, yeah, here's, you could do this, here's, this is the zoning. They gave us a conceptual layout, we said that looks fine, and then they, and then it just gets slow rolled, you know, on there for whatever reason. I don't remember. I know there was one, a discussion about one, and I don't know, it was, I thought it was the Walmart that was thinking about having that.
It was, it was Sam's, but it was basically in front of the Walmart, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Geographically.
Yeah, and that one there, you know, since I've been here, I haven't heard of, seen about that, actually.
Okay.
Don't know. The, the one that I have been involved in is the one at McCandlish, and that looks like it's going to go forward. They've gotten approval from the Road Commission, they went and got preliminary approval because of some line of site issues and other things, so, you know, they're, they're, they're taking action, it's just, it's like a lot of big companies there, they kind of go slow on certain things.
And as I recall, the discussion around the Sam's gas station was primarily held with the Township Board, I think. And I'm not sure why, how the connection is between that and here, why it wouldn't kind of flow that way.
Well, it's probably because of the PUD.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to amend the PUD.
Okay.
Yeah, and, I mean, really, the Heritage Park began with the PUD agreement and ended, so I think they kind of, and I think the developers still, I mean, you may even see, you're, you're working on a PUD amendment for that now, right?
Oh, yeah, well, that's.
So things sort of, things sort of initiate with that at the board level, PUD agreement, and then find their way back. Normally, it doesn't happen.
Okay, all right, that's it, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Mansour? Mr. Lloyd, do you have anything else for planning and zoning?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Brown, Zoning Board of Appeals?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the November meeting, we had two cases. One, a little bit laughable, I think, Mr. Lloyd will agree. A developer was building a home, and apparently he's built a number, number of them in the community. And through an error, I think, maybe that's the best way to say it, from a, a site plan, it was six inches off of what he, you remember him?
It was an error in the survey.
In the survey, thank you, that's, that's what it was. And anyways, he, he came in and, and went through the process to have it go before the Zoning Board of Appeals for a six inch variance. And of course, we, we talked about that, and I, I certainly believe in it. I think that is just, I, I'm glad the developer came in, but it's just a waste of their time and our time for something like six inches. And we think that those kinds of things should be able to be addressed.
Administratively?
Yeah, administratively, rather than coming to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I'm, I'm just delighted that the developer actually came in. So that was one, we, we agreed, and we gave them the variance. The second.
Mr. Brown, then what's in the process going forward? At what point would it kick it out and say, take it administratively?
That's the tough part, what is the cutoff?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Well, if, if I might, I would say this, what we will do is probably come up with a percentage over the dimensions, you know, so in other words, if there's a five percent deviation from that required setback because of something like this, not, not because somebody wants to, but simply because something occurred, then, you know, it would be helpful if we had those tools available to us administratively to be able to sign off on that. But there'd have to be some qualifiers and other things associated with that, and we'd work to come up with that. up with that.
Yeah, but I would think that you, in your position, should be, have the ability to make that call.
Yeah. The building inspectors are the ones who get those reports. And when they come in, they literally have to stop a project, the guy building a house, to wait for a variance. And that's tough when it's something like this. That is, that's...
Yeah. So all the zoning board members were unanimous in terms of thinking that that was a waste of the developer's time and a waste of our time to have them come in for a six inch variance. So anyways, we approved the variance. Next was Ascension Genesis. I got to make sure I get that right. And they came in for a sign variance, actually two. And the first one was a monument sign that would go up right in front of the main entrance to the Genesis Medical Center. And we debated that for a long time, looking at what they wanted to put there. And we really kind of had to think out of the box a little bit. Was the Genesis, and I'm going to use this term, Genesis logo a logo, or was it artwork? Because we thought if it were artwork, we might have some latitude a little bit. And so ultimately, the board agreed and we did approve the request from Ascension to put up a monument sign there just in front of the entrance, just before the portico. And we approved it. And I tell you what, I had to be there the next day. It was up the next day. And it actually looks pretty good. I sent Mr. Lloyd a picture of it. I don't know if he shared it with anyone, but it turned out pretty good. Have you got it?
I don't have my phone.
Okay. I've got mine. And then second was the one that Mr. Lloyd alluded to. The zoning board of appeals did approve the excess signage for McLaren. I personally drove, and I know you did as well, on I-75 to see, if you drive around, I don't, it may say, it may say 70 miles an hour. But if you're looking for that facility, you're probably going a lot faster than that. And you might be by it before you even know it. And so we agreed that from a setback standpoint for them, that would be from the median over to where the actual building is. We were able to grant them some relief in terms of giving them larger signage. Now, having said that, coming back now to Ascension, I took the liberty of going over to the 600 building on the Ascension campus, just seeing if I could see it from there, which was a pretty good distance. Well, as Mr. Lloyd said, it's more than a quarter of a mile. And I went out and drove I-75 going northbound and southbound, just to see if it were up there, could I see it? And guys, that's a long ways. And so I kind of came to the conclusion that 1,000 square foot request, if you compare it to what McLaren got, might not be unreasonable after all. And so that's my own opinion. And that particular one was postponed until our December 18th meeting, is it? Yeah. So it's going to be back on the, on the agenda. But until you really take a look at that, that's a long ways. And again, people going 80 miles an hour, and if they're looking for the Ascension Medical Center, you could be right by it and blink of an eye not even know it. So that one will be back before us on the 18th.
I was just going to comment. I mean, there is a distinction. If you're heading south on 75, you know, Genesis has that big, sort of brick, you know, it says Genesis Health Park, and it's all of that nice brick base and everything. Whereas with McLaren, yeah, I could see why you could live by that in McLaren, because they don't have that similar, you know, big structure there, right? But you can't miss it if you're heading, you know, south. You can see Genesis, but you could easily miss McLaren. So I'm saying, I think it's a little bit different situation with Genesis Health Park than with the McLaren Center.
And make no mistake, hospitals are in business and they're in competition with other hospitals. They brought in color renderings of Henry Ford, Hurley, Roylo Beaumont.
Should look at those. Those are in Grand Light Town.
No, I know. Well, we made it very clear that our, our ordinances are different than theirs, but they were trying to build their case in terms of what was going on. So anyways, the bottom line is that they're coming before us again on the 18th.
Verbiage, excuse me, Mr. Brown, our ordinances are better than theirs, not just...
I think I may have said that.
Like a 190-foot tree for a cell tower?
Hey, you don't want to cut that conversation.
That is special.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Brown? We're on the site plan review. And the only thing that we've seen in the last month is what we saw this evening. It's always good to see someone going into a vacant building, as long as it's not a controversial business. I think we should take the motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, before that, before I make that motion, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, because we won't meet before that.
Thank you. Right back at you.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Bandersky to adjourn, support by, Mr. Yacho, is that where?
Discussion?
All those in favor, say hi.
Discussion, one second. Could I like, I'd like to recognize Mr. Brown's holiday tie.
Oh. Motion passes 7-0. We're adjourned at 8:20 PM.
No, no.
Oh.